I did not phrase that correctly.
You can bring Ace over, dog, you'll hang out with him.
Let the record show at 6 o'clock, we call our meeting to order. Sarah, would you do the walk call play?
Eddie Gokenhour.
Here.
Linda Barnhart.
Present.
Eric Hall.
Here.
And Canada Norton.
Present.
Tim Willis. Daniel Gant. Nick Deal.
Okay, we do have a quorum. So, the first item on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goff to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. The next item is our Sunshine Law speakers. That's an opportunity for you to come forward and speak regarding an item that may not be on the agenda. If you have something on your mind that is on the agenda, we would ask you that you wait until that item is discussed. Do we have anybody that signed in? Let the record show that there is no one to speak under the open governmental process. Okay, the next item is approval of the meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goff to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stay in due absence.
Let the record show there's one abstention by Ms. Norton due to absence. Okay, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 public hearings. First one is Bakers Crossing Townhome Subdivision.
Yes, the first public hearing tonight's a final plat for Bakers Crossing Townhome Subdivision filed 2205-132. The developer is J. Hess Group LLC and the engineer is Greenway Engineering. It's located in the Arden District, tax map 12J, parcels 14 and 19. This project's located at the intersection of Charlestown Road and Ceramic Drive. This project proposes the development of eight townhome lots on 0.87 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $63,564 even. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and developer's agreement.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
I am Mark Mezzanotte with Greenway Engineering.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, this is a public hearing for Bakers Crossing Townhome Subdivision. This is your opportunity to make your comments known regarding this subdivision. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak regarding this project?
There is nobody. I move to close public hearing.
Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed for Bakers Crossing Townhomes. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the applicant or of the staff?
I guess with staff, are we good with parking? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
They did all off-site parking. They don't have driveways, so there's three spots for each.
Okay, because that was unlike...
It's a parking lot, yeah.
Okay. It's good. A little tight, that's all.
It is.
It is.
Okay. You ready for a motion?
I am.
Yes, ma'am. Make motion to accept staff recommendation for final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $63,564.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $63,564. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, the next four public hearings is for Cardinal Point, and I won't I won't go through the... Now it's your opportunity for each one of them. Just let us know if you have something you wish to speak.
So, the first final plat public hearing for Cardinal Point is Section 4, Phase 1, lots 8 and 9, 98 through 127, and 145 and 146, files 2209-259. The developers Panhandle Homes and the engineers Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 9, parcel 11.9, and is located along the north side of Hammond's Mill Road, west of St. Andrews Drive. Phase 1 proposes 34 single-family lots on nine acres to be served by public water and sewer. Final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $271,800 even. Plat to be released upon receipt of a surety.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Sianovich, Fox and Associates, representing the applicant for this project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will tell you, this is a public hearing for Cardinal Point, Section 4, Phase 1, lots 8 through 9, and 98 through 127, and Lot 145 through 146. If you have questions or comments regarding that particular section, now's your opportunity to come forward.
Move public hearing to close this section.
Let the record show that there's no one to speak regarding this section of Cardinal Point.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed on that section. Planning Commission members, do you have questions regarding the final plat of Cardinal Point, the sections that I mentioned?
Yes, Steve, what are these two areas? Are they easements? These two areas drop down here.
They're actually easements because the next action on the agenda this evening is the lots that go even.
Okay.
So, these are just small, little drainage easements that will then be associated with the next phase.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions of Mr. Sianovich or the staff?
I move approval of the final plat.
No, please go ahead.
Okay. I move approval of the final plat contingent upon set surety.
Okay, the motion by Ms. Norton to approve the final plat upon receipt of surety in the amount of $271,800.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
All right. Cardinal Point, Section 4, Phase 2, lots 1 through 7, lots 128 through 139, and lots 147 through 152.
Yes, ma'am. So, this file is 2209-260. The developers Panhandle Homes and the engineers Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 9, parcel 11.9, and is located along the north side of Hammond's Mill Road, west of St. Andrews Drive. Phase 2 proposes 25 single-family lots on 6.8 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $190,560 even. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Do we have anyone to represent?
Yes, Steve Sianovich, Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Again, public hearing for this particular section. Is there any questions or comments?
If there is nobody, I move public hearing to close for this section. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour to close public hearing for Section 4, Phase 2, lots 1 through 7, 128 through 139, and 147 through 152. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich?
Hearing no question, ma'am. Make motion. We accept staff recommendation for final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $190,560.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff to accept a staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $190,560. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, another section for Cardinal Point, Section 5, Phase 1, lots 372 through 395.
Yes, this file is 2209-231. The developers Panhandle Homes and the engineers Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 9, parcel 11.6, and is located along the north side of Hammond's Mill Road, west of St. Andrews Drive. Phase 1 proposes 24 villa lots on 4.2 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $196,838.40. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Okay, again, public hearing on Section 5, Phase 1, lots 372 through 395. Anyone to speak from the public regarding this section?
If there's nobody, I move public hearing to close.
Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak regarding this section. A motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Ms. Norton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or the staff?
Move final plat approval?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Norton to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval on Section 5, Phase 1, lots 372 through 395, with a surety in the amount of $196,838.40. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did I get a second on that? You gave me a second, didn't you? Okay, motion by Mr. Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. The last Cardinal Point public hearing is Section 5, Phase 2, lots 326 through 341, and 420 through 431.
Yes, this phase's file number is 2209-263. The developers Panhandle Homes and the engineers Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map 9, parcel 11.6. Property's located along the north side of Hammond's Mill Road, west of St. Andrews Drive. Phase 2 proposes 28 villa lots on six acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $196,838.40. Plat to be released upon receipt of a surety.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent?
Steve Sianovich, Fox and Associates.
Again, public hearing for this section of Cardinal Point. Anyone wish to speak regarding this section?
Stay in, ma'am. Make motion. Public hearing to close.
Okay, let the record show that there's no speakers for Section 5, Phase 2, lots 326 through 341, and lots 420 through 431.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, how about questions from you regarding this section?
Hearing no ma'am. Make motion. Accept staff recommendation for final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $196,838.40.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval to Section 5, Phase 2, lots 326 through 341, and lots 420 through 431, with a surety in the amount of $196,838.40. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed, and you've got your approval.
Well, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, the next and final public hearing is Rhubuck Road.
This public hearing is a request for waiver. The project is Rhubuck Road, filed 2209-272. The developers Victor Ebersole and the engineers Greenway Engineering. It's located in the Mill Creek District, tax map 17, parcel 64, and is located approximately half a miles from Rhubuck Road at the West Virginia and Virginia State Line. The developers proposing the creation of an 8.3 acre parcel and a 14.7 acre residue to be served by private well and septic. The developers requesting a waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance, requiring WVDOH road furniture in order to proceed through the preliminary final process. Planning and engineering staff recommends approval of the waiver request to Section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance contingent on the state of Virginia's approval of the new entrance.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Rhubuck Road? Did a lot of finger pointing going on back there. What's...
Oh, okay.
I am Mark Mezzanotte with Greenway Engineering.
Okay. This is a public hearing regarding Rhubuck Road. If you have questions or comments, now's your opportunity to make those known. Okay, here comes Dad, right?
Good evening. I'm Chris Kilma.
I'm sorry?
I'm Chris Kilma.
Okay.
My wife and I live on Rhubuck Road, and we don't have an issue with the waiver that's being asked. Our concern is the access to these properties. What we've read is that the access to these properties have a 40-foot access right-of-way, which means they're talking about going through my property where there is an existing right-of-way, but only for two other lots behind us, not including the 14 acres and I think eight acres you were speaking of. That's our concern. We don't know how these people are thinking they're going to get back there because we have not granted right-of-way. There is another access to these properties, maybe a few hundred, or maybe 100 yards further down Rhubuck. There's a, I believe there's a demolition storage facility down there, and I believe it actually goes all the way to West Virginia. But we have not granted access down our driveway except for with the existing right-of-way for lots 2 and 3. That's our concern.
Maybe we... Do we have an answer from the staff?
So, this hasn't been submitted as a preliminary final, so we haven't reviewed it, so we don't know that much information about it. Mr. Mezzanotte will probably know more than we do, but there's a debook and page provided for the existing right-of-way, so I guess that would have to be determined if the parcels that are proposed to be subdivided actually have access via that debooked page.
That's would be subjected for Virginia to continue with that.
And it is on record at the courthouse in Frederick County. We have a copy. Had trouble locating it this evening, but they'll have a copy where it shows that there's three lots. For lot 1, we own the property. And then there's a lot 2, and there's a lot 3. All three lots have access. It's a right-of-way. But the 22 acres, the 14 and the 8, that is being subdivided between these gentlemen, they do not have right-of-way. We have not granted any rights.
Okay. Perhaps maybe the applicant's representative can give an answer to that?
I cannot, glad I have not seen that document that actually restricted the right-of-way that our surveyor prepared. There is a right-of-way going all the way up to Rhubuck Road that is on record with the debooked page number. I'm not aware of the restricting those two lots or these properties to the people who are investigating.
Are you in agreement with that, Mark?
So, I mean, like I said, we don't know much about it. Access would be, you know, hashed out during the review process, so it's not necessarily something that would stop this waiver from being yes or no tonight, but it's something we'd have to look at once it's submitted to us, if we get to look at it.
Are you saying approval contingent upon?
You can do your approval or denounce contingent upon anything, but I think that's something that we would look at anyways during the review process, period.
I mean, just to clarify, we remember all this access was coming from Frederick County, Virginia, not Berkeley County, West Virginia, so in our mind...
Access to a parcel can't necessarily be denied, so they'd have to look and see what the deeded access for this existing lot is. And that should be in the deed, which I haven't seen.
Virginia could landlocked us properly, so there has to be an easement there. But I mean, in our, in our thing, it's going to be, you know, they're going to have bigger issue, you know, with getting access from the Virginia side than they will from us, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Is the planning inside the engineering in Frederick County, Virginia will be much more strict than what we would do.
If this waiver was to be approved, it's still something they'd have to figure out and we'd have to look at.
Mr. Legal?
I agree with what staff's saying. The waiver wouldn't, I mean, it would put up some more road lots, maybe more purpose, but this issue still needs to be resolved before these new parcels are included.
Well, how...
We'll have to get word from whether Virginia approves.
Well, I don't understand why it would be submitted to us without clarification at time of submittal.
Our surveyor said there was access. There was shown on the plat that there's a 40-foot wide access to Rhubuck Road. I'm not aware of it being restricted, so I can't answer that.
Well, maybe you need to get your surveyor to answer that question, then. Kind of puts the planning commission in a awkward position to approve something.
This is, what we're asking for is permission from the code instead of accessing a West Virginia road to access Virginia road. You still have to go to Virginia and get permission to access that road, get an access permit. It's just the way the code reads that you have to get a West Virginia access permit. We don't have a West Virginia road right there to get a permit.
Okay. Planning Commission members, you've heard as much as I have. What's your decision?
My first indication was to table it until we had additional information to make the decision, but it sounds to me that even if we approve it, they still have to go through the process and determination if these lots do in fact have a right-of-way to them.
Correct.
Is that...
That's correct.
They could get, they could get the waiver approved tonight and then come to find out they don't have deeded access, and then that's their issue to figure out, but...
If that access...
This doesn't allow them just to...
This is only for two lots.
Just going through preliminary final process.
Their base is...
All because it's access.
In other words, what we're saying is we can't send him to West Virginia DOH for the difference for him to do what everybody else is doing. And he's asking for relief to go to Virginia and resolve it and bring it back, and we'll say, okay.
So, this is not only between Frederick County Planning Commission, this is also to be between lawyers of whether this right-of-way is actually...
If this script is, it's think that it says this access is only for X and Y, it could be, it could be a legal issue, yes.
Okay, well, that's still a little muddy, but...
But again, when we want to create a lot, it's just letting them go through the process. It's not complex for our end, but they, it might be a little bump down Virginia and tying you to the public.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but it still needs to be some comfort level for this commission, I think, to grant approval for the preliminary final process.
Well, they would still have to prove access to us before we ever even brought this back into you for approval, so we would look for a West, or Virginia Department of Highways equivalent of an entrance permit.
Or Frederick County.
We'd make sure that the deed says that there's access and that's stuff that we have to, we have to hash out through the review process. The preliminary final process and the full process, there's no difference in what we would require with the entrance and with the access, if that helps out at all.
Yeah.
We, in some regards, think of it like this. We can't approve it completely, no matter what, because he's accessing the Virginia roadway, so we still have to say, Virginia, are you okay with it? As if they saw this, they would come back and ask us, are you okay with them doing this? So, it's kind of chicken and the egg sort of thing. We have to tell them, we go to Virginia, but we still have to see everything they get in Virginia. And that doesn't mean that it will be completely approved once that done. It means that we then, we have to start our review process and see everything that Virginia told them it is that acceptable to our subdivision.
Okay, ready for a motion?
I will make the motion that we accept staff recommendation for approval of the waiver.
We have a close to public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Make motion, close public hearing.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour and second by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. Thank you, Sarah.
Also, make motion that we accept staff recommendation for approval of the waiver request, Section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance, contingent upon the state of West Virginia's approval of the new entrance, and that this property is able to use the right-of-way that's being requested.
Needs to be rejected.
State of Virginia.
Not West Virginia.
I'm sorry.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour. Do I need a second, then?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant the preliminary final process, but it also needs to be clarified as to whether the right-of-way is approved from both Virginia and West Virginia. Does that sound, Mr. Legal, does that sound appropriate?
Yes, definitely. West Virginia DOH told.
Do you want my five motion?
He did a good job, and a good motion.
It's a good motion?
Good motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clears mouth. Okay.
Did you see both of people from Burton County? It's in Burton County?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, Greenway should have coffee.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
We have it on the plat shown, so our surveyor should have it.
They can't put it on the plat.
That would be a...
They can't put it on the plat without having it.
I would...
But our contract specific things, that it's our lot, we own it.
We get that, but I would be surprised that it restricted to that degree and said he has to.
Why don't you pull the deed for the property itself, see what access is to?
You can't landlocked a horse.
Okay, whatever access or whatever conversations you might have, maybe you could have them in the hallway. That's okay. We just need to keep the meeting rolling, which basically concludes our agenda, other than the staff council discussion, action, and motion. And the first thing we have before us is a calendar of planning commission meetings for 2023.
Question, is July 3rd a Monday or Tuesday? I notice on here it says Tuesday, but I looked at the calendar, it looks like it's a Monday. So, somebody else could check that. So somebody else could check that. Because I think the fourth is the Tuesday.
I did it, so it probably could be wrong.
I just want to make sure before we approve something and then
No, I did it.
You think it's a different calendar?
I don't know, my phone's weird at times.
No, my phone says Monday's the third as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
So we'll be on Monday, the third.
Okay.
So I'll change that. My fault.
No worries.
They always, we always do.
But you will have the meeting on the fourth?
We'll have the meeting on the third on Monday.
On Monday? So you're gonna close on the fourth only?
We'll be closed on the fourth, yeah.
Okay, okay, so it is Monday, July the third.
We would love to, you know, get the Monday.
Yeah, maybe we can have Monday and Tuesday.
So if Sarah's here, he could, you know.
Yeah.
I'm pushing luck.
We would love to have that looking off.
Hey, if you had, if I had my way, you'd all be working tomorrow on election day and you'd be working the polls. So there you go.
Thank goodness.
So be thankful for what you got.
Did somebody brush your cherry eyes on this?
No.
She said she was cranky, so she's
That's right, I'm cranky, I'm bored.
And I move to approve the amended meeting schedule.
Okay, motion of Mr. Golf, second of Ms. Norton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the meeting schedule amended will be corrected and we will show up on, on Monday, the third of July. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that basically concludes most of the business. I need an executive session for legal matters.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of Mr. Golf for legal matters, uh, second by Mr. Gokunhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we are now in executive session to discuss legal matters. Okay, we are now in executive session to discuss legal matters. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we are now out of executive session. And there is no action to be taken by the planning commission as a result of the executive session. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, now, under staff sessions, do you want to talk about?
Oh, yes, um, well.
Hey, we gotta do it in order here.
Oh, so Eddie had come to Brian and I last week about possibly advertising our public hearings in a little bit more of like a public forum on social media or on the website. The county website's run by IT, so it would be a little tricky for us to advertise at will our public hearings. So Matt Alstead told us that we could either advertise our public hearings on the West Virginia Berkeley County Courts Facebook page, or we could create our own where Sarah and I would have access to create Facebook posts based on our public hearings and in hopes that, you know, will reach more people.
Well, okay, if you have a Facebook page and advertising a public hearing, does that then give the public an opportunity to comment?
We'll turn the comments off, so it'll just be a post, so nobody can comment. All they would really be able to do would be able to react to it or share.
Will they know that, that, that their comments are not being posted?
They, they won't be able to physically post the comments.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll obviously provide like contact information, so probably just put my, my phone number on there so they could call, or Sarah's the main number, so they can ask questions about it. If they, if they have more questions about the actual public hearing, but.
Okay, is that going to put you in a position where we have heard, I think, at the last planning commission meeting, but you told me that that was okay to do and you told me that was okay to do? Remember that conversation that we had at last meeting? And I don't remember who said, who said it.
No, it won't put us in that position.
It won't because that's a singular issue.
Okay, well, I don't want to put you in a position that somebody then comes into the public hearing and said, I sent a comment through to Laura Huffmaster and she said that there's no problem that I can build here.
That, that won't really be where the conversations on the, the Facebook posts won't really like trigger those conversations for people that want to develop their property or have questions about that. It'll be more so like our public hearing ads, we'll just post verbatim what the ad goes in the newspaper on a Facebook post. It gets posted to people, per to the, to the page and then they can share it. It's more, it's more efficient than in the journal, honestly, that's just what we're thinking. And I think it's a good idea.
As long as it doesn't put you in a position where you are liable for any kind of.
It's more to be able to have.
He said, she said.
Somebody who doesn't maybe drive by that property all the time.
Okay.
But lives within a certain distance of it, let's say somebody wanting to open a titty factory. And we all know that titty factories are extremely nasty, it smell bad. Well, if you live a mile away, you might not drive by that site every day and see that place inside. It's another way to extend that circle a little bit so that everybody has an opportunity to be heard.
Okay, as long as it doesn't expose you guys.
Right, because people know by listening.
No, I feel comfortable, I feel comfortable about it, I don't, I don't feel like, I, I don't feel like we'd be exposing ourselves like that.
It's a great thing.
Is it okay with you?
It's certainly okay with me, I, I think all public is simply because it online, if nobody meets with us.
Yeah, they don't.
I don't think that, I think people see the pink signs and some people don't know what it is.
Right.
And it's really hard, I mean, Sarah does a really good job at writing clearly on the signs. And like I see them and I know what it says, but that's because I know what they say, not because I'm driving by and read them.
Yeah, often you can't really read them from the road unless you have.
And, you know, we're meeting, we're meeting state code minimums and that's fine, but I think Eddie is absolutely right and I'm on board, like we need to be more transparent and hopefully it'll just lead to conversations being had where we can explain stuff to people over the phone instead of having them, you know, having to come in and ask questions that could have been answered earlier in the week and try to clear stuff up.
As long as it doesn't expose you to any kind of, he said, she said, I'm okay with it, everybody else. Do you need a motion? One motion?
Just direction on that.
Direction.
And I mean, and, I mean, Matt Alstead would be the one doing the actual posting. He runs a lot of the other pages.
Okay.
This, of course, with the public notices and posting of the agenda and lead ahead on there.
We'll use it for all of the, uh.
It's just informing the public, it's not gonna be a public forum where there's.
There'll be no conversation.
Okay, all right, as long as.
It's more just a public notice.
If, if, if it doesn't get you in any hot water and our label is okay.
We already have made a decision with that other person that he's only being dealt with in writing. I, I refuse that discussion, so the further.
Okay, all right.
It has to be a writing.
A motion?
Move to adjourn.
Okay. Motion of Mr. Goff to adjourn at.
Mine wasn't writing, it was still, I was still.
Do I get a second to the adjournment?
Second.
Second of Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?